Good evening, I'd like to call the regular city commission meeting of May 16th, 2017 to order, and ask all of you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up is an approval of the agenda, there are copies of the agenda available at the back of commission chambers as well as at the recorder's desk. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda, but I would add, ask that we include prior to our consideration of number seven, whether it would be before it or during or after, a motion that we consider a resolution that would act to suspend enforcement of any provisions of the ordinance that was approved at the March meeting, having to do with peddlers and solicitors, that would pertain in any way to non-commercial solicitation, political matters, or anything involving the distribution or placement of handbills, or any type of written communication. I just want that suspended by, formally pursuant to resolution by the city, so that there's no question about any policy, if you will, regarding non-enforcement. So I'd make a motion to approve the agenda, subject to that amendment.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
We'll place that at seven to eight, and we'll take that up right before item seven. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Approval of the minutes of both the regular city commission meeting of April 25th, and the work session on May 2nd.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting, April 25th, 2017, and the work session on May 2nd, 2017.
Any questions, comments, or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications. Did receive a couple communications, anything that, actually, there is one that we should... This is resignation? I want those other meetings to be the environmental advisory committee?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to receive and file a communication from Earl Grow, and accept his resignation from the environmental advisory committee.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have our county commissioner, Helene Zach, with us this evening, do you have any updates for us?
I do. So I just wanna, last month, I mentioned that the RTA, Regional Transit Authority, is having a board retreat this Thursday. It's from 9:30 to 2:30 PM. They did change the location, and it's now at the Kulick Center in Ferndale, which is at 1201 Libranoy, and it is an open meeting if anybody is interested in attending it. Part of the goal is to set a new mission, vision, so forth, and see if there's viability to move forward. I do wanna report, there's all sorts of other discussions about transportation going on behind the scenes as well, besides the Regional Transit Authority. One of the things that I have, want to challenge people to do, I serve on the Citizens Advisory Council for the regional transit, is that if you feel strongly about transit, to start riding transit vehicles. And I had the opportunity where I rode the Reflex Bus downtown to the Eight Mile Boulevard Association meeting at Cobal Hall. And it was really wonderful, and we have a stop for this, you know, express bus downtown at 11 and Woodward in Huntington Woods, right in front of the flower shop. So it's very conveniently located, and I do encourage people to do it. Costs a dollar fifty each way, so it's much cheaper than parking at Cobal Hall or other places. And, you know, it's got a pretty full schedule, you can find it online. I do wanna talk about parks, Oakland County parks. We did have a meeting, some of the commissioners, to talk about, you know, looking at investment in our end of town. I do have a report, and I haven't had a chance to analyze it, that shows zip codes of who goes to which parks across Oakland County. So it'll be interesting to see where Huntington Woods residents go within our Oakland County park system. We are getting closer. I do wanna remind you that this is the second year that we are allocating some local road money into all of the cities. I wanna remind you that a couple years ago, the South End Commissioners were able to add a million dollars into the Oakland County budget to help do local road repair. And we did it under economic development. And this is different, because historically, we could only, we can only spend road commission dollars on road commission roads. And we don't have that many road commission roads in this end of town. So there was a formula distributed, it's not huge, it's about $7,000 matching funds that goes to Huntington Woods, but we'll take everything we can get. And we thought it was gonna be a one-year funding source, this is year number two, and it is in the Oakland County budget to 2022. So I'm also working on trying to increase that amount of money, 'cause every bit counts, so. That's it for this evening, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for public participation, this is an opportunity, when our citizens may present their thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. As we get to each item on the agenda, you will have an opportunity at that time to speak to that specific item. If you have anything, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Kathy Kraustoff, and I'm a 27-year resident, I live at 26099 York. And I'm here today just to bring awareness to an event that's going on that several residents are participating in, and also to see if there's some way that we can get the word out about this event throughout the city. The event is called All Hands on Deck, and it is an event to help bring awareness to the stresses that are affecting the Great Lakes, and particularly to the impact of the cuts to the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative will have on the Great Lakes. It's a nonpartisan event, family-friendly. What we're doing is getting people together on the beaches and waterways of the Great Lakes. Currently, we have over 40 communities that are gonna be holding events on July 3rd, 10 o'clock, and that represents five of the Great Lakes states and Ontario. We are expecting to have local and state and federal, national politicians joining us at this time, and we'll have media at all of the events. The events differ from place to place, the communities, each person who is hosting an event has the opportunity to stage the event the way that they want to stage it. Some people are having local artists come in and do interpretations, some people are having politicians, as I said, come in and speak. I'm hosting two events in the area, they're both downtown Detroit. One is going to be on the Riverfront at William Milliken State Park, and the other one is going to be on Belle Isle Beach. Another resident of Huntington Woods, Marjorie Marks, who could not be here tonight, is hosting an event up in Potaski, at the Festival Shelter at Bayfront Park in Potaski. There's about 27 events in Michigan, and then the rest of them are spread out over the Great Lakes states. I brought some handouts, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to leave them here.
That would be great. What time are the events that you're hosting?
The events are at 10 o'clock. We're going to start having people come in at 8 o'clock in the morning. We're, as I said, we're expecting to have folks on the waterways. Belle Isle will be on the beach, and the Riverfront will be on, in the wetlands of Milliken State Park. And we also have a Marina component of it, there are going to be people with boats. And hoisting flags, we have a special flag for people to hoist on that day, and they can keep those flags up for the whole year. This event is scheduled for this year, but this organization, the All Hands on Deck, is going to move forward, one of the things that we are asking of our politicians is to base science decisions on, base decisions about the Great Lakes on unbiased science. So it's going to be an organization that goes past just this year, and goes on, so.
Is there a website for All Hands on Deck?
There is, the website is AllHandsOnDeckGreatLakes.org. It's big, it's a long, long name. And each of the events has a Facebook page. So the Detroit Facebook page is All Hands on Deck Detroit. It's pretty simple.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do I leave these with you? Brilliant.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Some of those out on the information table, anyone that wants to pick them up.
And we'll be able to talk about the television.
Uh, in the, on the cable channel?
Yes, ma'am.
You mean like the rotating? Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close public participation, and move on to a proclamation. As most of you know, our DPW manager Claire Galet retired, and last Saturday, we had a formal reception for her at the library, which many people attended, and we read this proclamation. But we wanted to read it into the official record at the commission meeting tonight. Unfortunately, Claire couldn't be with us, because believe it or not, she's at a recycling event, which is not surprising to anyone, but I would like to read the proclamation. Whereas Claire Galet was born in Atlanta, Georgia, raised in Leona, New Jersey, eventually settled with her mother and father in Ann Arbor, Michigan, was educated at University High School, and graduated in 1964. Became a student and graduate of the University of Michigan, having earned a master's degree in social work. And whereas Claire, with her husband Asher, children Tomer and Simon, eventually settled in Huntington Woods, and immediately became involved with a myriad of community efforts, helping to organize the Residents' Association that would be the kernel of activism in the city. And whereas Claire used her talents and love of the environment to greatly assist the city's early recycling efforts, this passion for public service was the impetus for her city commission candidacy, and a future of activism in Huntington Woods, and the region for a whole host of environmental issues, including a love for solid waste recycling. And whereas Claire's hands-on involvement was the reason the city has received numerous local, regional, and state awards for environmental leadership, becoming one of the area's most important spokespersons for the cause. Having served as the representative to both SACRA and SACWA, her voice for our residents spoke volumes for the need of careful planning and forward-thinking programming. And whereas, through Claire's efforts, our boards and committees, including the BART Board, and the Environmental Advisory Board, and the Friends of the Library, were so successful in getting their message out. No doubt, the residents of the city will certainly miss Claire's involvement in Music in the Woods, just another one of her multitude of community initiatives. Now therefore be it proclaimed, that Claire Galet be recognized and hereby honored as a leader and visionary, and that our entire region and environment will forever be changed by her commitment to our city. Be it further proclaimed that Huntington Woods City Commission, on behalf of all our residents, express our sincerest appreciation to Claire Galet, and wish she and her family well in their future endeavors. And I'm sure, we're gonna continue seeing Claire involved with many recycling and other events in the future, as she's still an active resident in our community. So we'll make sure that Claire gets that now that we've read it.
Sure.
Thank you. First item of business, actually no, public hearing first, before we adopt the city budget. This is an opportunity to receive public input on the proposed 2017-2018 city budget, in accordance with Chapter 9, Section 8 of the city charter. Amy, would you like to give us a quick review of the budget?
The budget that was presented has a slight increase in the millage rate, which is just reflective of the new road bond that was approved. The general fund and the rest of the millage rates are actually going down. It represents an increase from 22.37 mils to 23.15 mils. And the budget also shows a 3.5% increase in water rates. All other services are, remain as they have in the past.
Okay. Thank you, is there any, any comment from the public? All right, seeing none, public participation, after the public hearing will be closed, and we'll move on to the regular items of business. First one being the adoption of the city budget for fiscal year, commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending on June 30th, 2018. We have a motion to approve?
Some will.
Support. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor? I have a couple comments, I'll try to stay under the three-minute mark. I do have some concerns with our budget, specifically some of the capital expenditures. I realize it is a monumental task trying to create a budget that achieves as much as possible with the limited resources, so please know I'm sympathetic to this process, being a large undertaking. My specific concern has to do with a few of the capital expenditures, mostly chamber, the city chamber, commission chambers being upgraded, the Peaslee Park, the library furniture. I believe in a year where we will begin to see our expenditures exceed revenue, we must be certain that we are spending our money as wisely as possible. $65,000, as much as I'd love to see some of the implements in this room upgraded, seems a little excessive. You know, thinking about things we could do for a little less, I know the chairs are kind of the problem. You know, we could probably do a lot with a couple thousand dollars to replace the chairs. And I know that we don't need to spend everything that is, you know, being budgeted right now. As for Peaslee Park, as much as I wanna support everything the Parks and Rec Department does, $85,000 seems excessive, I'd like to see us really try to find grant money for this. And as far as the upholstery for the library, I find, might be something that we could find funding elsewhere. I don't believe that any of these items are urgent, and I don't mean to oversimplify anything or assert that the answers are easy, but we will need to do one of three things. We're either gonna have to reduce our spending, increase our revenue, or do a combination of both. So for our chambers, I propose that we cut the budget, and reduce it to something of a $2,000 budget for replacing our chairs, and possibly consider discussing putting swing sets at Peaslee Park. I know that that's a very popular park for soccer, and a lot of the parents like to have something for their children to do there. We can talk more logistics about that, and I just think that $180,000, the only place you'll hear anyone say that that's not a lot of money is in government, but I think that $180,000 could be set aside for things that are much more pressing at this time.
Any other comments? I would add that, as, even though we budget these funds before any of these monies are actually spent, it does come to the commission for individual approval. As a matter of fact, the commission chamber upgrade has been part of the budget for probably 10 out of the last 12 years.
You can tell by the age of the chair.
Commissioner Jenks?
Yeah, I have a concern about Peaslee Park, but I have a concern about all the parks in the city. I would like to see Huntington Woods known as a city for its parks, and especially for little kids. We need to grow our population, we need to have people looking here. To take a $7 million budget, and to cut one or one and a half percent out of it as it relates to a park, to me, is not constructive. Soccer is half the thing. We do not have a playscape for little kids, we have a playscape for teenagers that's there now, that was moved from 11 Mile Road, because it was not heavily used at 11 Mile Road. If you drive by Peaslee Park, you will not see it heavily used there. I would like us to look at all of our parks, and really upgrade them. So when people talk, one of the things they talk about is have you seen the parks in Huntington Woods? Now, the second thing is the library. Our library is known as being unique. The hours are as long as a much larger city. The quality of our collection is better than most cities two, three, four, five times as large. The furniture there needs to be upgraded. And we also, at some point, will get a request for possibly a new reading room. Again, that is one of the unique assets of the city. I do agree with the commissioner that it doesn't matter where and how I sit, and that's one area where I'd be willing to even go to zero, since we've gone to zero at least for the last 19 years that, or 17 years that I've been around. So, and I bugger Mary about this as much. I would like us known as the city with the best parks for little kids.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with both my colleagues with regard to their comments. And the first thing about the budget is that this is a year-long process that the city goes through in terms of evaluating what we can spend money on and what we can't. And the first question, one with any business or any enterprise that you ask before you spend money, is what do we get for it? What's the value for what we get? As far as the commission chambers are concerned, I agree with Commissioner Iverson that if we could get some chairs that didn't require chiropractic treatment at the end of a session, that would be a good thing, because remember, many other people use this room besides us. This is the center of government in our city, you know, planning, zoning, there are many groups that use it, it isn't just us. Now, you know, does it have to be palatial? No, but any building, or utility, or resource, or facility has to be upgraded from time to time, just to maintain basic aesthetic, whatever you wanna call it, so that it looks decent. Now, I'm not saying it doesn't, frankly, I couldn't care less. Like I said, if we could get some better chairs, I'd be really happy. As far as the parks are concerned, I don't think we can spend enough on our parks, because I agree with Commissioner Jenks. When you're talking about what people see, and what they want, and what they like, the parks are just, they're so important to the quality of life in the city, that parents can take their kids to a park where they know the equipment is safe, they know it's modern, they know it's clean, means so much. So the question is, what value do you get from that? And the answer is, it's incalculable. And I remember, you know, complaining to Alex when they took down at the park on Balfour in Coolidge, Balfour Park, there was a heavy timber set a number of years ago that had become termite-infested, and it had become a danger, and they tore it down. And we had people who, you know, came in and were upset that we had torn down this play structure, as they like to take their kids there. And Alex had a playset moved from the skate park on 11 Mile over there at the time, because this was at the height of the recession, there was nothing to work with. But I do, I really believe firmly that the parks are just, just an integral, integral part of the quality of life in the community. My view is, we can't spend enough to make those parks appealing from a safety perspective and an aesthetic perspective, because I believe that enhances the value of the homes in Huntington Woods, good parks. Lastly, on the library, I agree with Commissioner Jenks, that the library in Huntington Woods is a sacred place for people. People want to go there, they find great intellectual stimulation there, and a great sense of community there. And it's also a very, very important, important place for families, kids, and, and the residents of the city. So keeping in mind, like Bob said, that what we budget, we don't necessarily spend. I certainly agree with Commissioner Iverson, that we need to watch every penny we spend. I think we've demonstrated over the years, based on our credit rating and the way we manage money in this city, that we're one of the most fiscally responsible cities in the state of Michigan, if not in the United States. So, you know, it's, it's a matter, every, our constituents, our residents, we need to make sure that they're satisfied, we want people to want to live here, enhance the value of the homes, and these are just small things that go towards that. But I certainly agree with her assessment of the budget, and watching with the idea that you have to watch every penny that you spend, but also understanding that Tony Lehman and the city manager, and the auditors, review these things pretty carefully, and we're run to a, you know, on a tweezer's edge here in terms of what we spend. So, but I certainly appreciate the observations of both of my colleagues, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I recognize that, you know, as we move forward, we certainly are going to face some financial challenges, with a lot of different things on the horizon. But knowing that we will be revisiting these items when they come back for approval, you know, I'm comfortable moving forward, you know, recognizing that when they come back, we'll make sure that they're scaled appropriately. Also, with regard to the parks, you know, Scotia Park sort of started out as a grandiose sort of idea, and then was scaled back, as we learned that resources weren't as available. I had a local Realtor, Gail Linden, reach out to me about a grant opportunity for our parks, which I passed along to Amy that we are applying for, from the Realtors Association. That may be able to hopefully offset some of those costs, so we may be able to save some dollars there as well. So I agree with Commissioner Olson on the chairs. Sat in here for a lot of years on the planning commission, the zoning board, and now the city commission, and if you lean back too far, you're gonna find yourself in a world of hurt, so. If nothing else, I think that's...
If you don't lean back too far, you're in a world of hurt.
Yeah, that's true, right. So basically, I recognize that, and I think that may be one thing we move forward on, and maybe the rest of the city hall renovations we hold off on. But I appreciate my colleagues' comments, I think that they're all important. I think we all recognize that revenues are becoming tighter, and expenditures are certainly growing at a greater rate than our revenues are because of the situation we're locked into by our state laws. So I appreciate everybody's comments and feedback, and I appreciate Tony and Amy's work on the budget as well, a lot goes into this, it's not something that we certainly take lightly here, and so I appreciate all of your work.
Thank you. Sounds like we're gonna have some entertaining discussions as we, as we go through the year with capital expenditures. I'm gonna add one more item about the commission chamber budget, because that's... budget, because that sixty-five thousand dollars does seem like a lot of money. Part of that budget goes to bringing Huntington Woods into the electronic age, which I think will be very useful for all of our citizens. It'll make all of our paperwork much more accessible to the community. Hopefully, it can do the same thing with planning and zoning. We have to look at that when, when the options are presented to us, but I think that's a, an exciting part of that, those budgeted dollars. That might be a nice improvement for the entire community. So keep your minds open. So is there any public comment? All right, seeing none. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is a matter of authorizing collection of tax administration fees. Normally, we'd have Tony explain this to us, but he's on vacation.
Yes.
So Amy, you get the.
Sure. This is just an annual resolution that authorized the city to collect a one percent administrative fee to offset the costs of collecting taxes on behalf of a number of different taxing entities, Berkeley School District, OCC, the Zoological Society. So that offsets our cost for collecting and distributing that money.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Commissioner Jenks?
Yeah, I'd like to see outreach to the larger bills to make sure that somebody does not have a financial problem, although there may be no waiver.
That's, that's the next item.
Okay, fine.
Okay, any public comment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we move on to the transferring of delinquent water bill payments from the two thousand and fifteen and sixteen to the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen summer tax roll for collection in accordance with chapter nineteen, section two point eight seven of the city code. This is something that we do every year at this time of year. I know that everyone has been notified several times that it's on this list. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move that the city treasurer be authorized to transfer the city's delinquent water bills for the following accounts listed to the two thousand and seventeen summer tax roll of the city of Huntington Woods in accordance with chapter nineteen, section two point eight of the city code.
Second.
Commissioner Jenks?
Yeah, I have a concern that some of these may be, because of financial hardship, I would like for any bill that's a thousand or higher, that a contact, a direct contact be made. If there is no ability to deal with this through the water bills, at least we can assist residents through the property tax. I know in Macomb County, they look at property taxes when, when people are delayed. I know Andy Meisner is now doing this in Oakland County. I'd like to see us do this with water. Obviously, in some instances, it's water leakage. We may be able to refer people through the handyman program that we have. I'm, I'm just concerned that some of this is not delayed, but because of inability to pay. Some of the stories I did hear from the Macomb County Treasurer years ago was when they contacted people, they were seniors especially, they were embarrassed to tell their children that they couldn't pay these kinds of bills. We've always been friendly. I'd like some additional outreach and direct contact with anybody whose bill is a thousand or higher.
Mr. Mayor. One of the things I know we started doing after last year, which I hope has helped, is including with the water bill a statement referencing where folks can get assistance from some community assistance organizations if they're having difficulty paying. I'm hoping that that may have reduced this list a little bit, but if folks aren't maybe seeing that, maybe an additional contact is necessary. But I know we've partnered, and there are charitable organizations available to help these folks. If they cannot afford to pay their water bill, they'll step in and offer assistance in that regard. So I'm glad that we're doing that. I think it's, it's important. Obviously, we need to collect this money or everyone else's water rates are going to go up. So it's a fairness issue as well, but I think if there's anything we can do to help these folks, definitely we should do it.
Any public comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Yes, this is an item to purchase a new chipper. We have a unique opportunity to save money on our chipping service that we offer every Monday. We contract with SACRA contracts that with, is it HART? That doesn't? And they do it for us year round. The contract is up for negotiation, so we have asked SACRA to negotiate a contract that would only run April through December, and the city will do December through April. That will save us some money. Our chipper, though, is twenty-two years old. It's on its last legs. It is difficult to get parts for, so we, it had it in the budget to replace next year. What we'd like to do is move it up, purchase it a year early, purchase it using the low bid that Berkeley had received for the same piece of equipment, and then we can use the money from the savings for chipping it, reducing that chipping contract to help pay off the chipper a little faster than we usually pay off for equipment. So this is a multi-resolution, multi, one is to transfer money from the general fund to the equipment fund to offset the purchase. The second paragraph is to actually approve the purchase, using the city of Berkeley and the cooperative purchasing agreement that we have. And then secondly, to enter into a new agreement with SACRA that will reduce the chipping services that we use through HART.
Payback period on this, based on the money that we're saving, by doing the chipping ourself is just a little over six years.
Which is pretty good on a piece of equipment. That's forty-three thousand dollars.
Yes. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move that the city of Huntington Woods appropriate from general fund, fund balance forty-five thousand dollars that will be transferred to the equipment fund. Further be resolved that the city will purchase one Morbarch M-15 RX model, BC-15, under chipper as been on October twenty-seven, twenty sixteen, and awarded by resolution on December five, twenty sixteen to Morbarch Company, Box 1000, Win, Michigan, four eight eight nine six, for forty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents, as approved by the city of Berkeley, Michigan, under the provision of the city of Huntington Woods' Cooperative Purchasing Ordinance Number Two Point Five Eight Zero, Cooperative Purchasing, Less Any Applicable Trade in Value of the nineteen ninety-five Bandit Chipper, estimated at four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents, netting us a cost of forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Further be resolved that the city of Huntington Woods will endeavor to complete discussions with SACRA for annual chipping services that would cover the months of May one and November thirty, and that chipping for the period December one, April thirtieth, be done in-house.
Second.
Any public comment? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is a renewal, consideration of renewal agreement with Oakland County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant, or better known as CDVG, for the years of two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Comes up every three years. We have the opportunity to participate in CDVG grant funds. Oakland County asks us to commit to working through their services for a three-year period. So this is the same terms that we've had in the past.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve. Comments or questions? Public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is a, is a board and commission committee appointment. We have an opening now on the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we appoint Julie Petrick of one three one five six Winchester to the Environmental Advisory Committee to fill out the balance of the term that's been vacated.
Second. Any comments or questions? Public comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll notify Julie and we'll know when the next meeting is.
Yep.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to item number seven A, which is, who's going to lead us on, on that just to begin with?
I think we have a discussion about first and second amendment and why we're.
Okay, um, do you want me to start with that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, first and second reading, I remember.
You're taking out the second, you're taking out the second amendment here?
All right, we're going there.
Good luck, good luck, Madam City Manager. You can deal with that one. Give everybody your cell numbers so they can call and talk to you.
On the agenda tonight is a proposed amendment to the existing peddlers, solicitors, canvassers, and handbills ordinance. Now, under the Home Rule Cities Act, the city is required in its charter to state how ordinances will be adopted. The charter that's in effect in the city of Huntington Woods only requires that it be one meeting. So in other words, an ordinance can be introduced and adopted at the same meeting. If you look around at other communities, a lot of communities, the charters were written that they call for two meetings before adoption. So in other words, you first have a meeting where the ordinance is introduced and discussed, and then it's tabled and it's set for a second reading, and it's only at that second meeting that the ordinance is adopted. With a lot of these things, I think, and what I've suggested to the city is going to trying for a while the format of having two readings for each ordinance, okay? That allows the public an additional period of time to look at it and provide any comments that they might want to provide to the city. And so that's been my recommendation. So with respect to the ordinance we're considering tonight, that would be a proposed amendment to the ordinance I discussed, what we'd like to do is set it tonight for a first reading, introduction and first reading. That's what we'll call it. So we will be introducing the ordinance. The public can discuss it, the commissioners can discuss it, but no formal action will be taken on that ordinance tonight. Instead, it'll be set for a second reading and possible adoption at the next meeting. So that goes hand in hand with what has been added as seven A, which would be a discussion of what we want to do in the interim, since we're going to put, put this over two readings with the existing ordinance. And I think, do you want me to turn it over to you?
I have a question for you about this process. What if you have an ordinance that you want to adopt, let's say it's got something to do with just road controls, are we, if we go, if we say we're going to do this with this, first reading, second reading, are we obligated to follow that every time, or is it flexible?
It's flexible because the charter only requires one meeting. So what, you know, with something like this, where there has been public comment, or maybe going forward, things that you know maybe you want further input from the public on it, you may choose to select that particular ordinance for two readings.
Mr. Mayor. This is something that I spoke to our city attorney about. I mean, we're one of the few communities that does not do a first and second reading. And, and I think there's a benefit to it, as, as the attorney has pointed out. One, there's more public participation. Two, in the past, we've attempted to amend some of these on the fly at the meeting. That's dangerous, I think. I think it's better to make those comments at the first meeting, let the city attorney take those back, then we get a revised copy with those amendments at the second reading. Also, our charter allows us to, in an emergency, we can adopt it and have it take immediate effect, not the standard twenty days that any ordinance is laid over for. So I think we do have the ability in emergency situations to move forward immediately, as Commissioner Oldsmann has said, in situations where you don't maybe need to do it in an emergency situation, but something maybe more imminent, we could waive the second reading. But I think as a general matter, going forward, I think that we should always do a first reading with an introduction and the second reading and adoption. I think that it's just a safer way to go, and there's a lot more value in, in moving forward in that manner. So I'm glad that the city attorney presented it this way at this meeting, and I think it'll do us a lot of benefit going forward.
I do want to, so the public understands, comments will be taken tonight. There'll be discussion with the commissioners on the ordinance, and then there may be some changes made. There might not. It would depend. But if there were some changes made, that, that ordinance with the changes can still be adopted at the next meeting.
Okay. Want a motion with regard to the resolution? Still, or is that even necessary?
Well, I, I guess at this point, what has been added as seven A, if I understand correctly, is while we're working on this amendment of the ordinance, what is going to, what the city is going to do with respect to the ordinance that's pending. And it's my understanding that what we want to do is place either, pass a resolution or place a moratorium, however you want to call it, to not enforce those provisions related to the solicitors, canvassers, or handbills at this time. Is that accurate?
As it pertains to.
Correct.
Any non-commercial.
Which would.
Activity.
Right, which would fall under those three sections of the ordinance.
But this, what we're enjoining, if you will, is enforcement of any provision of the ordinance that was previously passed that has to do with either advocacy or informational or political speech, just so it's clear that there will be no enforcement of those provisions pending the second reading of this ordinance at the next meeting. But I would also add to that, there are two provisions of the current ordinance that I think we should include in that resolution. That would be twenty-eight, twenty-six, this business about placing unsolicited written materials in vehicles, and twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty, that's actually fine.
So we should talk about that in the next thing.
Okay, but that's fine. It's just so long as, as we include that.
Right. So we'll do that when we do the next items, when we talk about changes we want to make. Or no, did I misunderstand you? In other words, you want that to continue?
I want the moratorium, but, but first, we'd have, I could, I could believe you're probably correct. We'd have to discuss the amended ordinance, and then I guess that would be a subsequent resolution to suspend portions under the, the proposed amended ordinance that we take it up at the next meeting.
Correct. Okay. So I guess what you would be looking is to pass a temporary moratorium while the city commission is continuing to study amendments to the ordinance, and during the time that the moratorium is in effect, the city will not enforce any of the provisions of the existing ordinance relating to solicitors, canvassers, or handbills, that being all the speech that is arguably the free speech. Does, does that sound accurate?
Well, it pertains to non-commercial activity. So if somebody's coming in selling cable TV.
That falls under the peddler section, which we aren't suspending.
Right. We're talking about, we're talking about, we're, we're, it's a for, not necessarily for profit, but a commercial endeavor.
Correct. Okay.
Mayor, I'll second Commissioner Oldsmann's motion to, to suspend that and just, I want to be clear to the folks at home and the folks in the audience that, you know, we've had a number of incidents lately regarding peddlers, and I know our public safety directors in the audience tonight. So that provision, the ordinance, will still remain in effect. And I'm wondering if we could have our public safety director come up and just talk about that section of the ordinance and maybe what they're doing in that regard, and some of the things that this ordinance has prevented as far as individuals coming into this community with home invasion felonies and those types of things that have been denied the ability to do that. And that will still exist until we can tweak the First Amendment issues with our, our ordinance.
Yeah, we did have an example with a recent applicant for a peddler's license. I think that's. Yeah, the, we did have an example with a recent applicant for a peddler's license, I think that's what Commissioner O, uh, Rosati would like you to ex, uh, talk about.
In regards to peddlers, it's always been a practice, at least in my thirty-two-year career, um, to investigate or do a, a background of peddlers for commercial purposes. Uh, the reason, uh, pretty obvious, what, what would happen is, uh, we would do, one, check the business out, do a background on that, and then the employees that are sent to go door to door to sell those products. It's, it's not uncommon for us to run a background and find out they have a criminal history for home invasion, larceny of building, uh, possession of stolen credit cards, things of that nature, that would be a, a public safety issue. You have to remember, these are people who are not just walking the streets, but they're going door to door, uh, knocking on doors, trying to sell these products. It's also a ruse for criminals to go up to a door, knock on a door, to see if anybody's home, they open the door, and then they'll tell you that they're selling a product. If law enforcement is, is aware of that, and then we get phone calls about these people, we know that's what they're there, they've already been checked out, and then we won't detain or delay them, they could continue to sell their product. Um, it's always been a practice, uh, recently I just had one for the fireworks, um, for an employee who had a, a long criminal history that wanted to sell Wolf Six. Now, we don't prevent the business from coming in, it's just that employee. In my, uh, experience, what would happen is we would tell that business, uh, reject that employee, and they would just bring another employee to us, we would check that person out and say, okay, that employee's fine, and have somebody else come in. So we don't even really prevent that company, it's just certain employees. So it's, it's very helpful, uh, i- i- in regards to law enforcement, in regards to public safety, and I would highly recommend to continue that practice, at least for commercial businesses. We've never did that for, obviously, religious reasons, political reasons, handbills. It was only for the commercial businesses, it's always been a practice that we use.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any public comment?
David Sloan, eighty fifty Lincoln, Huntington Woods. I appreciate Commissioner Olesman's resolution to suspend, suspend enforcement, but I feel it would be better to repeal the ordinance right now. I believe the, the proposed ordinance is really quite good, with one exception. So I would suggest that we consider repea, that the commission consider repealing it. If you were to repeal that one today, you still have the peddler protection ordinance that was enforced in, in the, uh, in the mirror code.
That got repealed last month. Last month, the original ordinance was repealed and replaced with the one that's on the books right now.
That's why we wanna keep the peddler section still, at least in, going.
Okay, I understand that.
Alright.
Then I would ask at the next, uh, commission meeting, when you pass the, the proposed one, that perhaps you give it immediate effect, because the, the meeting will be on June twentieth, and with twenty days, then it would be July tenth until it would be, uh, officially recognized. And it would just be, be very helpful for, for everyone to...
I'd have to look at that, because unfortunately, our charter requires the, yeah, which is a long period, but...
I know, that's why I was asking today to possibly repeal it.
Yeah, okay, I'll look at that.
Okay, and, and I applaud doing the first and second readings, it's something I've always wanted, I've seen in other cities, and I think that's, that's a good thing, that prevents knee-jerk, uh, ordinances.
Any other public comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now moving on to the, uh, introduction and first reading of the, uh, of the new ordinance. Carol, do you wanna?
Well, um, a- as you, well, let me back up a little bit. How this originally came up in the first place is, we had a, a number of solicitors going through the city, and we received a number of calls from residents that were concerned about the people knocking at the door really late at night, um, things of that nature. That's what precipitated us looking at it in the first instance, at which time, a number of the provisions had to be changed because we knew those had been out, were now outdated by case law. So we put together the ordinance that was adopted. Since that time, there have been certain, you know, objections made by individuals regarding the ordinance, questioning whether, you know, it's stomping on First Amendment rights too much, to sum it up. Um, this is a really confusing area of the law. There are constantly cases coming out in this area of the law. What we do know is, you have to treat all kind of speech the same. So when we're talking about First Amendment speech, we can't differentiate between political speech versus religious speech versus ideological speech, whatever, we must treat them all the same. So what we've done is, uh, looking at a lot of the new cases that have come out, we have looked at a lot of the other ordinances that exist out there, a lot of which have been, you know, more recently amended. And so what is before the commission today is a proposed ordinance that would make some major amendments to the ordinance that exists now. Probably the most significant thing is, we would, in all, you know, in basic, basically remove any type of regulation of solicitors or canvassers, as those are defined under the ordinance. Now, solicitors, some of you may be thinking of peddlers. Peddlers are the commercial people that go around and try to get money out of you, or try to get you to buy a vacuum cleaner, or whatever, okay? Solicitors are people that are going around, generally expressing some First Amendment view, and, but they may say to you, can you please make a donation? An example of that, I think you had clean water go through your community last year, that's an example of what would be a solicitor under the ordinance. Canvassers are your true people going door to door that just are expressing some First Amendment view to you, okay? So the proposed revisions to the ordinance would not regulate those two categories of people at all. What it would say with respect to solicitors, because they will be asking for money, is, look, the city would really like you to come, you know, let us know you're gonna be in town and when you're gonna be in town, so if we receive a call, we'll know. We can answer a resident of who, why that person is out there. With respect to the canvassers, we just claim won't regulate them at all, okay? Peddlers regulations are needed for the community, you just heard, you know, the director say that, uh, you've gotta protect against the potential for crime and fraud with people going door to door trying to sell things. So in a lot of respects, the peddler's regulations will stay very much like they were before, which is pretty consistent with, with what's been out there for a long time. We, the new ordinance would also sort of scrap the old handbill ordinance, which by the way, was not a new ordinance when it was recently adopted. It was an ordinance that has been on the books for years. It was just simply incorporated into the ordinance because it was part of the section. So we're looking at revamping that in its entirety, there's been a lot of new case law that's come out re, very recently on that, so we're making tweaks to that, and a lot of the proposals are there tonight. So that's what we have that we're presenting tonight, we'd like to get comments on it. I really think it's probably one of the most liberal ordinances out there when it comes to allowing people to go through the community and express their First, First Amendment opinions, okay? But we'd like to hear your comments on that. I wanna make one other statement, and, you know, I probably shouldn't do this, Jules will smack me, but remember, these people don't write the ordinances, okay? The, the city attorney writes the ordinance, alright? So, so if you're gonna yell at anybody or be mad at anybody, I guess you should yell or be mad at me, okay? We do the best we can do, we, this is an area of law that always changes, and we try to stay up on it, and we'll try to stay up on it going forward as well, because I can tell you, it's gonna change next year as well. But that's basically what I have to say on this introduction. I'd like to hear the commissioner's comments, and we'd like to hear the public comment on it.
Okay, Mayor Protab?
Thank you. Uh, let me, uh, uh, indicate that, uh, Ms. Rosati is, uh, who I frequently do not agree with, but it doesn't make any difference because she's a very able city attorney, and her job is to disagree with us and to tell us we're wrong when we think we're right. Uh, in this case, this, uh, ordinance, uh, produced a great deal of colorful conversation between Ms. Rosati and myself. But let me just begin by saying, with this ordinance passed at the March meeting, it was in response to citizen complaints. It wasn't something that we initiated, it came to us from the city manager in response to resident complaints. And, um, I can tell you right, what I, what I said about it is, sometimes when you go to solve one problem, you create another, so it's sort of like the law of unintended consequences. But, uh, what happened was, at, when, when that ordinance first came out, we had a conversation here about it. I did question Ms. Rosati about, can we do this, uh, referring not specifically to that, but to other things, and she opined that, that we could. Uh, what happened was our county commissioner, Helene Zach, contacted me in response to an inquiry by one of our residents, Ms. Baseman, uh, who indicated she had serious concerns about the political speech issues in the case, in the ordinance rather, and that what they pertain to is what's known as a prior restraint. E- even though I am willing to wager, if we went to our residents in this city and said, we'll tell you what, any person who's gonna knock on your door in this city and solicit or talk or anything like that, should come to city hall and fill out a form and just say who they are. And I think most of our residents would say, right, because like our police chief said, that way at least we know who's out there. The problem is, the United States Supreme Court says you can't do that, it's considered what's called a prior restraint. We had multiple conversations with a very close friend of mine, Professor Robert Sedler at Wayne State University Law School, who's a distinguished professor of constitutional law. He reviewed the ordinance that we had, didn't like it, reviewed the amended ordinance that we're talking about tonight, had serious questions about it, but nevertheless, uh, among all of us, uh, there was an agreement that the political speech component had to go. And it isn't just political, it's religious, it's all of that. And the, in fact, the Supreme Court case that we're talking about is called Watchtower, and it deals with Jehovah Witnesses knocking on individual doors. And the basic thrust of the case is, the United States Supreme Court said it's offensive that the idea that people can't talk to their neighbors without it. But, uh, it is, I agree with Carol, um, there are cities out there right now in the, our community that have the ordinance saying, if you're gonna knock on doors and talk to people, you have to come to city hall and register. It's contained in their ordinance, 'cause I looked, there are. And as Carol says, there are federal district court opinions going different ways, different things. It, it's what it is, is a matter of balance, just balance. But when you're balancing, you always weigh it in favor of the First Amendment. So I think that the ordinance that, uh, Ms. Rosati has proposed, the new one, is, is okay. I have, um, I don't, I think it's a bit long, I think it's a bit wordy, and I think it's a bit, um, it's, it's too long. It, and I, I don't like that, whether or not we can change parts of it, I don't know, um, but, uh, we'll see. But there are at least two provisions of it that I'm going to suggest we also agree to suspend, and those would be section twenty eight twenty six, placing unsolicited written materials in vehicles, and twenty eight twenty five, distributing, throwing, or scattering unsolicited materials in public places. I discussed both of these, uh, sections with Professor Sedler, uh, just to get his sense. He believes both of those would not withstand a constitutional challenge, because I, and I can hear people now, I don't want anybody putting anything under the windshield wiper of my car, too bad. I can hear, that's, that's his response, not mine. Uh, distributing, throwing, or scattering unsolicited materials, uh, Professor Sedler's comment was, what does that mean? And if you have to ask that, then don't. So, uh, I think we have a workable ordinance here. Um, um, you know, would I prefer to vaporize the first ordinance completely tonight, probably? But I think this is, uh, the orderly way to proceed, and I think when we're done here, we're getting to the same result. We've stopped the enforcement of any offensive provisions, and by the time we're done, we'll have a, um, we'll have a workable ordinance here. But I, sorry to speak so long, but I spent so much time on this that I've earned it, so, thank you.
And Jules, I cut so much out, 'cause I said he always says it's too long.
Too long.
It's still too long for you.
Too long, it is.
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Olesman's comments on twenty eight twenty five. The, the caption says distributing, then it goes into throwing and scattering. But when you actually read the paragraph below, the word distributing really isn't in there. I mean, I would venture to say that throwing or scattering papers anywhere is littering, right? And I mean, that's covered someplace else. I would also say that distributing materials in public places, especially, uh, an example would be when a public place is used on election day, folks, uh, that are for, against a bond proposal or millage, absolutely under law, are allowed to distribute, uh, materials outside of a polling place, which oftentimes is a public place, uh, our elementary school, our recreation center, our city hall. So we have to be careful that we're not going down an avenue there where we're prohibiting some type of activity which is protected elsewhere, uh, in statute. So I would say twenty eight twenty five, uh, that going away wouldn't, uh, bother me, because I think that although it says distributing in the title, it's not referenced anywhere in the section, and I would think it's kinda iffy on enforceability on that, uh, anyway. Other comment I had is, I know at one point in time, the city had available, 'cause I seen it when I was out door knocking, uh, in the twenty fifteen election, they were, they were somewhat old, residents had stickers, and it said, uh, no soliciting peddlers or handbills, uh, under city ordinance number blah 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 by order of the city commission. And I'm wondering if we could have, uh, those printed up and made available at cost to the residents so that they could, uh, stop up and, and, and pay a small amount of money to have this sticker. It would reference the ordinance number, and that way they could, uh, make that available on their door, uh, if they don't want this type of, uh, activity.
Doesn't have to reference the ordinance, all it has to say is no soliciting. All it has to say, it doesn't even have to say that.
I, I agree, the, I'm just referencing, the prior sticker referenced that, and I just thought, you know, that's what was out there. However it's designed, frankly, I don't care. I would rather it just be available to residents, uh, at a, at a reasonable cost from the city, uh, that references, uh, these types of, uh, activities.
Yeah, I was, um, gonna copy the one that Lathir Village had, I wasn't aware that we did, used to have one, so let me see if I can find that first.
And if I can add one other comment, so, another vehicle that's used sometimes is in the ordinance, they provide for a do not knock registry, okay, that allows people to register with the city, and then there's a list that people can obtain that's, that shows all the houses that they can't go to the doors. Now, the downside of that is, that's usually used in ordinances that are also regulating solicitors and canvassers, so I don't think it works for you here.
I don't like it, it's too much, it puts too much, it's like the previous ordinance I questioned, the provision about distributing handbills to a home that's unoccupied, how, how are you gonna know that? I mean, I, 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 that's, that's slippery slope stuff, and I would, I would not...
Well, that's just another thing for peddlers.
Well, they can, that, that's good, well, the peddlers are already gonna be regulated, and I would, uh, that, you have to be careful even with commercial speech. Don't believe for a second you can just pass what you want to with regard to commercial speech. All I'm trying to do is, you know, I love lawsuits, that's how I make a living. I really, I really prefer not to be defending one, or be involved in the defense of one in a city like Huntington Woods. That's what this is, all this conversation is about that, it's avoiding challenges, that's, and about doing the right thing. That's what it's, and it's, at the end of the day, it's about balance.
And I, and I will tell you, there are some recent cases on, there are, on twenty eight twenty five and twenty eight twenty six that I'll put together a little memo for you.
It's gotta pass the Sedler test, if it doesn't, we ain't doing it.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, like I said. Pardon? No, 'cause we'll just, we'll just take all the discussion, and then I'll revamp as necessary, and I'll provide more written material for you. No, I'm taking notes. I think, yeah, I think we're okay.
Any other comments at the commission? Any public comment?
David Sloan, eighty fifty Lincoln. I have read through every word on both of these ordinances and the original one to compare them. And I do applaud the city attorney, I think, uh, this is, is, uh, certainly much better, and it covers, uh, most of the issues that I brought up in the last month. I would suggest that on page ten, sections twenty eight point eight and twenty eight point nine, may not be necessary. That's where it was, uh, you asked for voluntary notifications of solicitors, and that if they fail to notify it, there's no enforcement. That's just, uh, that's just one suggestion that I have. I have some others, and I will send those to the city manager.
Okay, that's great. And David, if I can comment on that, it's... And David, if I can comment on that, it's true, we're not really gonna be regulating them, but I just thought by virtue of leaving this in the ordinance, you know, a certain group might, they'll check the ordinance first, and they'll say, oh, okay, I don't have to do anything, but you know what, I'm gonna call them and tell them, you know, just kind of to sort of push them to make a phone call. Yeah.
I was just pointing that out, but there's nothing wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Okay, so I've got all the-
Do we need a motion to table it? Do we, what do we do?
No, all you, all you do, that's it. You've just introduced it for first reading, and that's it. And then next month, it'll be placed on the agenda for second reading and possible adoption, so that's it. You're not-
We don't need to table it to the next meeting?
No, you're just making a motion to introduce it, and that's it.
What about the two provisions, twenty-eight, twenty-six?
I've, I've got all those notes.
I know.
Yeah.
What happens, what happens, hypothetical question, let's say tomorrow Commissioner Jenks is at my house, and he's putting a flyer under my windshield, and I call-
This isn't in effect.
That's under handbills.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's not, yes, there's nothing in effect right now.
Excuse me, none of this is that simple, Madam City Manager. If it was, we wouldn't have spent the last week fighting about it. So it's very complicated.
What, you didn't enjoy all those phone calls?
No.
Okay.
So do you need a motion then for introduction and first reading?
Yes, and that's all, yes.
All right.
And that's it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll move, we introduce and read for the first time an ordinance to amend the City of Huntington Woods Code of Ordinances to replace in its entirety Chapter twenty-eight peddlers, solicitors, canvassers, and handbills, and adopt a new Chapter twenty-eight articles, one through six, to regulate or address peddlers, solicitors, canvassers, and unsolicited written material, and to provide for penalties for violation thereof.
Second.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, we're done.
So maybe on this next one?
Oh, we're gonna do that for this, yeah, okay.
Item number eight. Do we have a similar motion? Do we start discussion to read? It's almost introduction at first reading, thank you.
Second.
This is a change to an existing ordinance that we passed last month, correct?
Considered it last month.
Oh, we didn't pass it.
We should've done a first reading.
So.
This, this is an ordinance that regulates where trashcans, recycling carts, and yard waste containers can be stored when they're not out in the right of way for pickup. We had suggested that they be placed at the rear side of the house, and there was some discussion about possible homes that might not have the ability to place them in the side or the rear of the house, so we added language that says where containers cannot be placed at the rear side of the house, these containers shall be set as far back from the road as possible against the house or garage.
Any comments or questions about this ordinance, Commissioner Iverson?
I would just like to have the commission consider some of the wording, maybe changing on a tiered basis, where materials, containers, recycling carts, and yard waste containers, or bags, they shall be placed at the rear of the house, period. If that's not possible, then to the side of the house, and then if that's not possible, then the exception for hardship, as far back from the road as possible against the house or the garage. I think that we would all agree that the ideal location would be behind the house. If that's not possible, then certainly side of the house, no further front than the corner. And then lastly, you know, for hardship.
I would support that.
Again, you just have to have discussion, okay.
I'm a hard dog to train.
I know. Okay, I got that.
Commissioner Jenks.
Yeah, on the section where it says where containers cannot be placed at the rear side of the house, these containers shall be set as far back from the road as possible against the house or garage. That sort of puts us back, I believe, where we started, where the discretion is up to the homeowner wherever they want to place it, and there is no consideration of neighbors. I would suggest that, and I like what Commissioner Iverson has suggested, that where containers cannot be placed at the rear or side of the house, the homeowner shall work with the Huntington Woods compliance officer to establish a suitable location, reviewable every two years. And the reason for the reviewable every two years is to avoid grandfathering of a, of something, even though the home itself may change and the yard may change. So what it would be is that the homeowner would work with the city compliance officer to make a, an agreeable location. Otherwise, I put it in this corner, this corner, one may be more desirable as it relates to a neighbor. There may be problems that the homeowner has, but they could negotiate it, but the control would lie with the city compliance officer. And the two, two-year review, or any period of time, is to make sure that we don't have parking spaces that have been given to someone permanently. I mean, you can change the wording, but the intent is, there's an agreement between the city and the homeowner on that alternative location, if necessary. And I agree to the, a step suggestions that Commissioner Iverson said.
Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna overregulate. I just wanna make sure, though I understand, I mean, essentially, if, if we adopt what Commissioner Iverson is saying, and we try at the rear, and we try at the side, and that doesn't exist, and they have it out front, and we receive a complaint, code enforcement would go out there and say, hey, look, you can put this in the side, or you can put this in the rear, so you have to, or we're gonna issue a ticket. And then if we issue a ticket, they can go explain to the district court judge why they can't put it in the rear of the side. So I think if we lay out the preferred order of how this goes, and they don't follow that, isn't it built into the ordinance that we could then issue a citation for that? And to have it addressed? Or do we have to work in there some type of permitting process or approval process for where they go?
It seems that permitting only pertains, or whatever you wanna call it, to the rare circumstance where it doesn't fit into the typical scenario.
Right, that if it doesn't, it's not in the rear or the side, you could issue them a ticket. And I would think probably at that instance, you really fall into what you're talking about.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's built in, basically.
It's number three that Hank says, okay, let's talk about where you can't put this.
Right, right. I don't know, it's, I, I agree, I understand what you're saying, and I, I support it. I'm just wondering if it's already sort of built in, if we adopt what Commissioner Iverson is saying, if, if they don't do those methods, and they decide to put it out front because they feel they fall under this, I can't put it here, I can't put it there, we're gonna end up going out if we get a call, and, and we're gonna help them determine whether it fits there or there, and if not, issue a ticket.
So what? So what, as long as everyone's happy, that's why Commissioner Jenks and Commissioner Iverson are both right. So what? Small, it's not offensive to anyone. Prevents blight. All this is about is preventing visual blight. That's what it's about. Nobody, I, I know no person that thinks garbage cans at the front of the house enhance the value of the real estate.
I don't-
In fact, Commissioner Rosell-
I don't disagree.
When we first did this, it's kind, when we first went down the road of evaluating these ordinances a number of years ago, we had a city commission meeting at which two of the realtors appeared and talked about how they viewed this kind of stuff when showing homes, and so this is nothing but an enhancement process. I don't, I see this very reasonable steps towards maintaining the beauty of the community.
I, I don't disagree. I guess my question is, what happens if they don't agree?
The city code enforcement officer will make the decision for them.
I mean, are we gonna spell that out in the ordinance? I mean, I guess, it's, it's, I, I would just prefer to not overregulate and not overstate the situation, and just be as simplistic as we can as to where we prefer them. If you fall under a hardship, you think you fall under a hardship, and you place them somewhere, and we receive a complaint, we're gonna act on it.
I think that's what Commissioner Jenks was focused on.
But this requires some type of preemptive contact to the city.
Yeah, if there's a situation where they can't accommodate the ordinance, or believe they can't, they would come to the city and say, what do you think? That's all. I, I see his as being minimum regulatory impact. I think yours is a, if you, pardon me, it's a, you know, a solution, you know, looking, it's, it's, Commissioner Iverson's point is she's spelling out the conditions. He's pointing out the rare exception, and, end of story. Let's see how it works.
In most cases, this is gonna be complaint driven.
Right.
Right.
Got it.
That's my point, I guess.
Well, in this instance, it's homeowner driven, the way I'm proposing it. If they can't fit it in to the backyard or the side yard, for whatever reason, I've got little kids, I've got a tiny backyard, I can't put it there, I have no side space. Then the next question is, where do I put it? And you're saying, put it next to the garage, put it next to the house. That was the situation that provoked this in the beginning. The homeowner said, you really didn't tell me in your ordinance originally where to put it, so I put it where I chose. The neighbor complained, the homeowner said again, you have no specifics as to where this belongs. And what I'm suggesting is, there are sections of the city where you're probably not gonna be able to put it in the back or at the side. In that instance, come to the city and talk and get an agreeable, at least the city compliance person, the code enforcement person, and sit down with the homeowner and say, look, if you put it here, it's gonna be the most hidden from your neighbors. If you put it there, it's not. That family has children. What this was, garbage can fell over, the, the diapers fell out, little kid, a two-year-old out playing, it, because it's right between the bushes, was picking the diapers up. So the grandmother with, of the, of the neighbor had to pick up and clean up every time she came, diapers and garbage that was on the ground. In this instance, if you can't make the first two steps, you come to the city, and you get an agreement. I mean, Hank or whomever we have is extremely reasonable. The, a number of incidents that this would occur, we have virtually had no complaints in general. So I mean, that's my point of view. Let, they, all we do is work the court system and make people pay otherwise.
Mayor, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is exactly what you're saying. This is gonna be complaint driven. If anybody is under any misconception that twenty days after this gets adopted, folks are gonna wake up in the morning and say, I better check the codified ordinances to see where I can put my trashcans, you're sadly mistaken. Residents are not gonna be preemptive about contacting the city about trashcan replacement, placement. All I'm saying is, if we get a complaint, we'll deal with it. I don't know that we need to put an onus on a homeowner to be preemptive about the placement of their trashcans based on their reading of this ordinance, which they're likely not going to read. So I, I guess I'm just saying that I don't know that it's necessary to put that, to put that in there. It's gonna be handled through the complaint process.
Kick this dog, haven't we?
Okay, yeah, let, let me play with a different, some different alternative language here. I, I think I understand what everybody's saying and what they wanna accomplish, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Any public comment?
Pamela Hexton, one zero eight six five Kingston Avenue. I'm kind of interested in this, 'cause I dealt with it myself a few years ago. We got the recycling bins, and I live on a corner, so wherever it is, it's in full view of everybody all the time. Lots of people in Huntington Woods live on corners, and whatever's in their yard, it doesn't matter if it's in the, by the garage or by the house, behind or front, it's the same, because everybody can see it. So we like to recycle, we're pretty committed to recycling. But recycling is really a, a balance between how much you're willing to be inconvenienced and, and how much you can accomplish with that inconvenience. So I tried a whole bunch of things with my recycling bin. It's currently right in front of the garage, which is on a short driveway right here on Scotia, everybody can see it. I tried putting it in the garage, which worked, I could get the car in, but I couldn't get out of the car. So I moved it to the front of the driveway, or the front of the garage. I could get out of the car, but I couldn't get out of the garage. So we tried the middle of the, of the garage. We could, we had about three quarters of an inch, or we ran into it, or we were so far to one side you couldn't get out of the car again. So it had to be outside somewhere. So if we put it in our yard, we tried this for a while, kind of out of sight, where we didn't sit in our family room and look out at it. And then in the middle of winter, you've gotta drag it through snow, or ice, or soggy spring rains, just to get it out to the curb on the day they pick it up. And eventually, we came to the conclusion, it either sat there, or we just didn't recycle. Because that balance of whether or not we're willing to be inconvenienced to that degree kind of tipped too far the other way. And, and I think you're gonna find, a lot of people are gonna run into this. Because you, you have to have some sort of balance of, of what you can do with what you have. I mean, this is the situation we have. If there's a, a person who's got garbage literally all over the lawn, why don't you pass an ordinance that says it has to be contained?
We have it.
Well, then why aren't you, why isn't that enforced? Why are we telling people where to put garbage cans? I mean, why, shouldn't that be enough, that if there's trash on the lawn, or somebody's dog got into it, strewn it around, that we give them a ticket and say, you have to buy a garbage can and put your plastic bags in it, or something of that nature? I, I just don't understand the whole point of this, this thing. I, I mean, sometimes it gets where there's so many rules. It's like if my neighbor down the street doesn't like the way I walk on Tuesday, I have to hop on my left foot. I mean, how far can we go? I mean, we live here, we don't have a lot of space. We don't have places to put things. We don't have big yards, things are very visible, especially for us corner people. Everything we do, everything that happens is visible to everybody. I mean, you can only regulate things up to a certain point, and after that, I think you're just beating your head against a wall, frankly. So that's what I'd say. Thanks.
David Sloan, eighty-fifty Lincoln. I practiced law for forty-five years, and I've reviewed hundreds of ordinances and created some of them. This ordinance is not necessary. I first moved into the city in the fifties. I remember when we had green space on Woodward Avenue. We are adults in this city, we can take care of our recycle bins, of our refuse. I don't think we need more ordinances. We already have too many ordinances. And also, as indicated at the last meeting, that this arose from one complaint. We don't need an additional bureaucracy. Hank Barry has enough work to do. And I feel that the best thing would just be to leave this alone. And I'm on a corner house also, and of course, it's the, the recycle bin. We, you know, our city was the poster child for the single stream, so we all had the recycle bins first. And it's tough bringing those up in the snow. You have to find the right spot for it, and sometimes it's not going to fit this area here. So I suggest that you allow us residents, as adults, to take care of what we need and not pass anything, not pass this ordinance. And I think that's, that would be the best thing. And if you had to pass it, then I think maybe the appeal should be the zoning board of appeals. If somebody has a problem with where they can't put it, and zoning board deals with feet and, and how far away things are from the building, then put that in. But I think we don't need, we don't need any of this at all.
Just some food for thought. Susan Karabelnick, K A R A B E L N I C K, twenty-six six sixty-five York. I don't know if any of you have been to Sun City in Arizona, but I think they have the best solution that I've ever seen. All of their garbage receptacles are submerged at the curb. It's in the ground, there's a cover on it. The garbage guys come by, they take off the cover, and they take the garbage out, put it in their truck, put the cover back on, and go on to the next house. I thought that was the greatest thing I've ever seen for garbage. I've never seen it anyplace else. I don't know how costly it is, but I think it's a good solution.
Yeah, yeah, they don't have snow there.
That's true, it doesn't snow there.
Well, they get heated lids, but it's pretty hot.
Yeah, right.
And, I mean, the smell is controlled, everything is controlled. And I think it'd be nice if we could do it, but I don't know that we can. End of story.
Any other public comment? Okay. Commission is all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll talk about it again next month. Item number nine is, uh, setting, uh, meeting date of June thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, at six thirty P M in the city commission chambers, uh, to hold a city commission work session. Any public comment? Comments or questions at the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a meeting date. Reports and minutes. We have five sets of, uh, reports and minutes that have been presented. Any, uh, comments, questions? If there are none, I'll take a motion to, uh, accept and file the minutes. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. War number three twenty-four, do we have a motion to accept subject to full audit?
So moved? Second.
Any questions?
Call him up at home.
I can just make it up, fake news.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, will we create a roll call vote? Do I have a motion to, uh, recess into closed session immediately following the regular city commission meeting to discuss city of Huntington Woods and city of Pleasant Ridge versus city of Oak Park on the forty-fifth district court? So moved?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. City managers' report.
Yes, well, you could tell summer's coming. There's a lot of things going on at the Recreation Center. I want to let, remind everybody that the pool officially opens Saturday, May twenty-seventh. That will be Memorial Day weekend, the hours would be eleven A M. to eight thirty P M. Uh, however, the Recreation Center is closed on, uh, Monday, Memorial Day. Is the pool closed too, or, no, pools open? Okay. Uh, the summer edition of the Hometown Herald are, and, uh, newsletter were mailed today. Hometown Herald is also available online on the city's website, and registration for summer classes and events begins May twenty-fourth. We now have online and in-person registration. Uh, we are requiring, or asking individuals to fill out a one-time-only household information form, uh, prior to registering. So, if you're going to register online, please come in and fill out that form, and then you can register online, or you could come in, fill out the form, and register in person at the same time. Instructions on how to register online, because this is entering the twenty-first century here, uh, is at a new website called recreation dot H W M I dot org. Again, instructions on how to register online is recreation dot H W M I dot org. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions? City manager. Okay, with that, we'll move on to commissioners' remarks. Commissioner Iverson?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Rosell?
Uh, just two comments. Uh, the next episode of Commissioner's Corner will be airing in June. It'll be, uh, featuring two guests, our county commissioner and our county clerk, talking about the various services that county government provides, uh, to our residents. News they can use about, uh, services such as health department, veterans affairs, how to attain a lot of services online. And also, in June, I'll be having another Cup of Joe with Joe resident, uh, meeting in the basement of the library. I'll have that date out, uh, on Facebook, and it'll be in the city's e-blast. Residents are welcome to stop by, it's an hour and a half, talk about any questions, comments, concerns they have, I'm all ears. Uh, and so, uh, that date will be available shortly, and it will be in June during the week, um, and it will be in the basement of the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenks? Pass.
Thank you.
Not so lucky tonight. Well, first of all, I just want to, I have three comments, uh, with respect to Rackham Golf Course. I want to, uh, tell our residents along Ludlow that this afternoon, I spoke with Charles Beckham, who is the director of neighborhoods for the city of Detroit, and under whose supervision the golf course is, uh, fall. He has, uh, and I told him I would be saying this tonight on camera for the record, and he indicated that was fine. He has assured us that he will see to it that the fence on Ludlow is repaired. This is towards the corner of Scotia, where it's been leaning over for some time. He has indicated that that will be repaired shortly. There's also another part of the fence a little closer down by Newport, where some driver missed the turn there, apparently, and drove through the, uh, fence there. Unfortunately, it's an unidentified driver, so there's no way to secure, um, insurance proceeds from that person. But the city will repair the fence on, uh, on Ludlow. I think, uh, city of Detroit, city of Detroit, because it doesn't, the fence does not belong to the city of Huntington Woods. And we, we have no authority whatsoever to touch that fence. And also, I am assured by Mr. Beckham that the fireworks display will go off as usual over the Rackham Golf Course, and that we are waiting for Vargo to send us back a written agreement. But Mr. Beckham has indicated that it's the city of Detroit's, uh, mandate in that regard with respect to the fireworks, and he has assured us that those fireworks will go forth uninhibited. Uh, I also want to publicly thank Professor Robert Sessler at Wayne State, who devoted, uh, several hours of his time the past few weeks to the topic of the, uh, peddler and solicitor's ordinance to the city, uh, at my request, and perhaps to Ms. Rosati's consternation at some points. But, uh, you know.
We're still going to have a conversation.
From conflict, from conflict does come good ideas, and as long as it's civil and good-hearted, which it was here, disagreement is not a bad thing, it's a good thing, and it promotes, uh, at the end of the day, a better ordinance. Uh, and finally, with respect to Claire Galette, I know of few individuals in government or people who have worked for cities or any organization who effectuated more change in her city than Claire. She changed the culture in Huntington Woods from, I don't care about recycling, to, um, a, a virtual, uh, obsession with it in our city. And, um, she, she is really one of the people, like I said, who really changed things. When you look for somebody who's influenced and changed behavior, it, it has absolutely been Claire. And, uh, to paraphrase, uh, John Lennon, who once said, if you wanted to rename rock and roll, you could always call it Chuck Berry. I would submit that if you ever wanted to rename recycling or change the term, you could always call it Claire Galette. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also have a few things. Um, the Tri, first of all, the Tri-Community Coalition is hold, holding their annual golf outing on Friday, February twenty-third. They're looking for.
February.
February.
Did I say February, Friday?
Is it in Florida?
June twenty-third, I'm sorry. Uh, starts at seven-thirty, uh, with registration and an eight-thirty shotgun start. Uh, they're looking for golfers, we're also looking for hole sponsors, uh, and a variety of other sponsors, uh, which, uh, remind me, I have to hit up my fellow, uh, commission and city manager and finance director, we're looking for a new sponsorship this year, the Bag Drop Sponsor. I want to see as a group if we can do that. Um, if you want any information about that, you can go to, uh, the Tri-Community Coalition's website, which is, uh, W W W dot Tri County, tricommunitycoalition.org. Uh, and you can register right there at their website. Also, look for Huntington Woods Meds Club members, uh, in the community in the next, uh, month and a half or so, selling tickets for the Fourth of July raffle. And, uh, finally, um, I'd like, a couple of months ago, uh, one of our residents received an award that I wanted to tell you about. Um, this came from the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, uh, which was created in nineteen ninety-five by Prudential Financial in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals, and it's designed to emphasize the importance our nation places on services to others and to encourage all young Americans to contribute to their communities. We had, uh, a resident, Carolyn Cohen of Huntington Woods, was named one of the top youth volunteers in Michigan for two thousand and seventeen. Uh, this is an extraordinary honor, as more than thirty-one thousand young people across the country participate in this program. And, uh, students like Carolyn represent the best of America's youth and are role models to their peers in their communities. Her, uh, Carolyn is, uh, a senior at Berkeley High School, and what she did was started Teen Screens, which is a nonprofit that has provided dozens of laptops to students in need in their, in her school district. After finding and anonymously donating a laptop to a classmate who didn't have one, Carolyn was determined to help others in similar situation. She now works with a computer programmer who clears donated computers of old data, data, and installs helpful software. So, I thought that was pretty neat that, uh, she received that award, just wanted to let everyone know about it. With that, we'll take a short recess and reconvene in, uh, closed session. Thank you.